I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
I could've been here earlier, but I really didn't try.
Roll call, Richard?
Here.
Juanita? Luther?
Here.
And Ernie? Approval of minutes from regular meeting how long September 18th. Alright, I have a motion by Adrian to approve the minutes from regular meeting how long September 18th. A second by Juanita, roll call, Richard?
Thor.
Juanita?
Thor.
Adrian?
Thor.
Ernie? Motion passes. Approval of agenda for October 2nd, 2018, regular meeting. I do want to say if we can add department head reports after item number 17, I just forgot to add that in after I took it out for the last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the request of department head.
Is that good? Alright, I have a motion by Adrian to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting with the addition of department head reports. A second by Richard, roll call, Richard?
Thor.
Juanita?
Thor.
Adrian?
Thor.
Ernie?
Thor.
Motion passes. Approval of voucher list. Make a motion for approval of voucher list.
I second the motion.
I have a motion by Richard to approve the voucher list, a second by Juanita. Roll call, Richard?
Thor.
Juanita?
Thor.
Adrian?
Thor.
Ernie? Alright, voucher list is approved. Moving on to new business, approval to rebuild well motor at Willard Well Number One. I have David's horse, but it's kind of going to be a mixture of me, David, and Dennis here. So basically, Willard One Well, the motor, there was electrical issues with it. And so, the recommendation is to rebuild the motor, remove it, rebuild it and install. It's kind of hard to get a replacement because it's an older machine. So getting it out, rebuilding it and reinstalling it, it'll cost about $65,000. And we do have the money for it. When we actually approved, I don't know if you remember, a couple of months ago during, when we approved the, I believe it was $40,000 or $50,000 for those two wells. One of them is still needing attention, we haven't done it yet because of the, we need the low season for water to be used. So that will start here now in September or October, oh, I'm sorry, not September, in October. And so, we only wasted, well, not wasted, but with the, for the one well, we spent $9,000 and we had approved $25,000 for it. So it was, it was done at a much cheaper cost than we had originally estimated when we approved that. So we do have money in that to rebuild this water.
This is the alpha sub list?
Yes.
So in the meantime, the second Willard, I don't know how it works, but the second well, Willard Well Number?
Correct, we've been running the second Willard right now. And we've been maintaining very well, and everything else seems to be doing good. We've got Willard One and Willard Two, and Willard Two is the one that we're operating right now. How long do you think that will go?
So, once we approve it, and we have to call them with schedule, and then it really depends on their schedule. They tell us when they can fit us in. So we don't really have a timetable because it's really depending on them. But we couldn't get a, we couldn't tell them that we're going to do it because I was going to ask them for approval first.
And right now is the time because the water, you know, people are using less and all that, so we're not in great demand for it versus a summer where we are. And also check, I checked with the light company, make sure that it wasn't one of their fuses or phase. And they went up there and checked and everything's put over aside, so at least we can say it wasn't bad.
I make a motion, we approve to rebuild the well motor for Willard Number One, well, number one?
I'll second.
Alright, I have a motion by Richard to approve the rebuild of well motor at Willard Well Number One, a second by Ernie, roll call, Richard?
Thor.
Juanita?
Thor.
Adrian?
Thor.
Ernie?
Thor.
Motion passes.
Came in right from work, guys.
Well, we'll wait for them, you know, here in the whole well, I know that it needs to come for, over for that amount of money. But in the future, if one of those wells go down, in my opinion, I think it should be up to the mayor's discretion if he needs to be fixed and if we get the alpha come in. Now, we approved it, but now we have to wait.
Yeah, we could always do an emergency meeting too, which takes less than 72 hours, if we had to.
But with an emergency, in the past with another mayor?
Well, if it's an actual emergency, like, I, yes, we would probably do it without council. While we, I mean, we would still come to council, but after the fact. But this isn't quite an emergency because we do have Willard Well Number Two. So, I mean, it is, but it isn't. I mean, it's a top priority, but it's not like an emergency status. So, yeah, if we needed to, we would have to do what we have to do. Could you, I mean, obviously keep water coming to Mount Air, that's a big thing, and I think people would understand if we approved it without council at that point.
So you don't have the time span that they're going to come in? Let's say you call them tomorrow morning?
They're usually pretty good, I mean, they, they have been, so I can't imagine that it would be like months out. I can imagine probably like within the next three to four weeks, if sooner.
If that, or sooner.
I can't, I don't think it's going to be like a, you know, not till January. Alright, moving on, approval to purchase two gas meters for replacements. So as you know, this I have with David too, but it's really us three again. We have meters in town that are really old, decades and decades older. So they're not registering gas as it should be. And we've talked about it before, that we wanted to start replacing gas meters and water meters. There, when, when you replace meters, it actually increases the usage because it actually registers. When things get old, it gets slower, right. So, there's two meters that are really big meters. One's right here behind the saw building, it's that really big one around the back. And then the other one is at?
The laundry mat?
The laundry mat. Two huge meters, and they're really, really older, and we need to get those replaced. Now, they are about $2,000 apiece for the meter itself, for the town divide. But again, it needs to happen.
Whatever happened to the grocery store? That one get replaced?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Are you still going back with the same or different style?
We're going with different style, this is our, they're called turbine meters? And actually, the old meters, the 1,000, you notice they're, they're huge. These turbine meters, if you go by like the grade school, we installed there, and we installed at the high school, they're only about so big. And it's, you know, it's got a little rotary inside. It's all fun little section, so it's not as, you know, people's, people, the big ones you see and people want to put a target on it, you know, or something. But anyways, for safety, these are the best ones, you know, they're more accurate and you don't have that diaphragm that's working and all that, it's all turbine, you know, so. And that's been one of our concerns about the laundry mat is that one is, well, I've been here 27 years and that meter has been there probably about 20 years. And when we replaced it, I think, if you remember, Rich, I think that was just another used one that we had put. So anyways, but it's just a meter that absolutely has to be replaced.
I'm all for replacing it, but do we have an idea if that was costing us money or how much?
So the one back here technically doesn't cost us because it belongs to the town, right? Yeah. So, I mean, it's just kind of like a keeping track kind of thing for this one back here. So we're not really, for the other one, I don't know, I mean, yes, I mean, if they're decades old. And keeping track does matter because we have to pay a fee to pipeline safety bureau. And so we need to keep track of stuff that's even the town owned, and so we have to track every cubic.
Remember it came up when we talked about the store, I had an idea, look, what are we possibly losing or whatever? I'm all for replacing it, yes.
But also, I mean, it gives us a factor to consider whenever we want to increase efficiencies over there. If we want to put in some more installation, how much are we losing just at the community building? How inefficient is that building? And so this gives us a metric to go off based on.
Well, I'm making a motion to approve the purchase of gas meters for replacement.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ernie to approve item number 10, approval to purchase two gas meters for replacements, a second by Richard, roll call, Richard?
Thor.
Juanita?
Thor.
Adrian?
Thor.
Ernie?
Thor.
Moving on, approval of Phase Two of police department remodel. So, as you guys know, a few months ago, we approved $5,000 for the police station to get it Phase One. Well, at that time, you didn't know it was Phase One, but it was. Now we are at Phase Two. Well, once you start, you know, once you start tearing down some walls and you start, you know, exposing some, soon as possible, you start realizing that.
Would that end the day for this?
There's a lot of stuff that needs to be done. So that building needs, it needs some upgrades. So there is a list as to what exactly is going down, I believe. Still look like a hump on a battery. So, and I'm not sure if people have heard, I'm sure people have, we weren't really trying to keep it a secret, but we didn't really announce it to kind of get a jump on things. But there was a robbery at the police station two weeks ago. And they, it wasn't actually in force entry, so we're still figuring that out, state police is on it. And they basically stole some drugs and a police, a police assault rifle. So, yeah. So we have under the new chief put in, it was actually his first day on the job, well, I gave him the keys and then we found out that it was. Yeah, it wasn't the best law people, but, I don't know. So like I said, state police is on it, I just called the FBI to see if they would come in and assist, but I have not received anything back from the FBI either, so. It's, it's pretty particular that there was no break-in. It's also pretty particular that, I mean, I, I understand that the fire was considered electrical, you know, classified as that. It's just so weird that in a couple of months' time, the evidence from the police station was, one was a fire, one was a break-in. So it's just, to me, it raises a lot of red flags. So like I said, the state police is looking into it and we'll see what they say. But one of the items that we're doing that we already did was we key all the doors with smart keys. We are going to be making some window guards for the windows. But again, in this particular situation, it was something that, there was no force entry, so.
I think Chris over here has got an outside camera. So anybody that came through that door should have been photographed, have you checked, you checked on that?
Yes.
Yeah, who came through?
There wasn't anyone that really took it, that we could see of any taking out anything. But the only ones that actually showed up to the police station were our police officers, so.
Grab keys?
Grab keys. They dropped marijuana and they didn't fall broken. They were strapped in a file cabinet with a lock on it, rather than the safe that we have in there. Not sure why, but they were. Again, a lot of questions that need to be answered.
So was the lock used by the key to open it or?
No, that was, no, it was, it was destroyed, the file cabinet was completely destroyed.
You thought, right?
Yeah, I think that's not it. So that happened.
So you say, you have any ideas if they came into the front door, the back door, the side door that comes in from the police station to the community building?
We don't. So when I, when I went in to show, when me and Dennis went in to show Chief the police station, I noticed that the door to the community building was unlocked, which is normally locked. But again, that's just, that's too coincidental, I guess. If that was an accident? Again, a lot of things don't line up, so we will continue to kind of see what we can figure out. But that's where the cameras come in, we will install surveillance cameras, those have already been ordered for actually all our town buildings. The camera system that we got from the police station, we monitored the Dr. Paul Center, these two buildings rooms and the, and the police station itself. With the police station being the obvious. Yeah, that we provided. So here are some of the things that need to happen. Immediate painting of all office sections and chief office, installation of secured iron bars at the rear exit and north entrance to Salt Building. Installation of surveillance cameras in office and building entrances, exits and surrounding areas. Installation of surveillance TV monitors for cameras outlined in the town limits and surrounding areas pending approval. So this money, this $5,000 that you guys approved tonight will go mostly towards security and the final fixing up of like the painting and the final, final items of that of getting everything in order. You will also see the purchase of office desktop computers and office workstations. Those are being bought by the insurance to replace the money, so that's not going to be, we're replacing that, so. We do have some from the DA's office that we're using, so we don't have, it's not as if we don't have no computers. Any questions?
How quickly, let's get that if it gets approved for like the surveillance requirement?
Well, the surveillance, the camera system was ordered next day. It takes about seven to 10 business days to deliver, so I'm expecting it any day now, once we get that. The windows are already made, we just got to paint them and, no, the bars on them. We would probably get Jesse to install the surveillance cameras. That's probably what it costs on there, just because our public works have been doing other stuff and doing other stuff, so it's kind of hard for them to break away and put up cameras. So Jesse would probably be the one to do the cameras. I did also, when I ordered the cameras, ordered a lock box for the DVR, so the DVR is going to be under lock and key. And then the room that the DVR is going to be also locked and key. So, I mean, if someone wants to get in, they're going to get in, but we are also getting the cloud, so that way whenever something happens, it does take a picture and upload to the cloud. So they can destroy the DVR all they want, we'll still have some images, so we'll do that. So they, could they break into the other door, the corridor? I mean, could they make another way to get in sometime? We couldn't do it. They could, and you know, I think being at the police department is actually being moved over there, that's why we're actually. That, like, for instance, the door between the community center and the police station, that's something that was put there, I don't know for what, a long time ago. Is it necessary? I believe that it could be in the future. So I want it really to open only from one side, like not even open from the other side. If you need to get in, you go all the way around. Because, and the way that I see it being used is, let's say, we have cameras in there, there's a fight in there, they're in the police station, they can run out through that door quickly to there. But there's no reason to get back from there. There's no reason for anybody renting the community building, having access to that door. And right now, it's wood, it's like, I mean, if you really want it to, you could probably slam into there and hardly break in.
And Jess is already making a barricade?
So, yeah, that, that door, and then I don't know if you picture walking into the police station, or you go into the police station, that other door going into the judges chambers, that should also be made probably into a middle door as well. But yeah, answer any question as soon as possible, something up in the morning, it's a safety. That's top priority. Just a motion to approve the?
Phase Two of police department remodel?
And the amount requested, just, I don't know if I said it was $5,000?
Right, it's $5,000, yes.
I'll second it.
Alright, a motion by Adrian, a second by Ernie, roll call, Richard?
Thor.
Uh, Juanita?
Thor.
Adrian?
Thor.
Ernie?
Thor.
Approval to purchase two dog chargers from the town of Orlando, Chief Juan Reyes.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to kind of just go over on the security, just some more information on that. The installation of the smart keys, if you're not aware of the smart keys, those keys are only made, they can only unlock that specific door. So what I've done to ensure the security and so we don't have a future incident like this happening again, those keys have been issued, they're under control keys. So when I issue, when we got the new smart keys and locks, they've been issued to each officer, there's only five sets, that's it. Myself and the officers have them, and our ACO, those are the only ones that have keys. And the security of the side door that we're talking about that leads to the salt center, the only one that has a key to that is myself. Because that also unlocks my, my office that has the same lock system on it. So if we do have to go in that from our office into the salt center for any reason, they're going to need my keys to get in. If they want to break in from the opposite side, they're going to have a hard time because of that installation of that bar. And then in the back of the police station, we have wrought iron and we have smart keys in, in that area as well. As of right now, while it was raining, Jesse was finishing up with the iron bars. Those bars are going to be put, where my office is at, there's a little window, there's going to be one there, and then one in the bathroom. So they can work all night long, but it's going to take a lot. And then with the cameras, it's going to just incorporate the whole concept, that's what the mayor is talking about, the surveillance system. So from the police station, we're going to have monitors, like basically we can go see the whole city. You can see everything that's going on, on the streets, around us and so forth. So if the officers, when they're at the station doing their reports, they can actually monitor the stations, it's all being recorded. And it's going to be locked down and then uploaded to the drive, so in case something happens, like some fire, hopefully not. But in case we have backup, because that's all evidence, anything that's recorded on video is considered evidence if we have to use it. So I can assure you that we weren't aware of it. I'm working with state police on their investigation to find out how this, this thing happened. Like I said, when we changed the keys, that was the first thing, because we had a lot of keys out. So it could be anybody, anybody that worked for the town at one time and had a key and opened it and the officers were on call or something. So that was the first thing that, that I told the mayor, we have to change it today, and they were done that same day. So now we have control and the progress of, of the police station right now, they're finishing up the painting inside, they're, they're getting everything we need to be operational hopefully soon. So that way we can have a nice police station that y'all can be proud of. And then we'll have an open house down the road so we can show where your money's being spent. And it's for security purposes, a lot of departments do that. So I, I know it kind of sounds, you know, the money and all that, but a lot of departments, you can't even get into these departments unless you have a smart card. And we're talking about that down the road, we're going to install a smart card, so it records who's going in, what time, what date, there's no question about it. So I kind of just wanted to spell, you know, maybe it's some rumors saying that it's an inside job. At this point, the investigation is pending, based on the factors that the state police found and what we did. We're, it's an active investigation and it'll go where it's got to go. And once that's done, then we'll keep, we'll keep the council and the mayor posted and then we'll let you all know what happened. Because those type of weapons are very assault rifles. So if somebody tries to palm that somewhere, anywhere in the United States, that serial number's recorded. We will find out who that person is and then from there we can backtrack. That's how that works, so it has, it does have serial numbers on it. The narcotics that we're taking were like small little marijuana plants that the officers confiscated from a call, they took those too. Well, we don't care about that. I'm trying to get that gun back somewhere, because I don't want it to be used in a crime and then it's going to come back to the Mount Air PD and then they're going to come looking at us. So it, it's an ongoing process, it is basic, it's a, it's a normal routine. But we minimized it and to minimize any misplacement of equipment or anything, all the officers, I had them complete a personal inventory of every item that this town has issued us. Accountability is one thing that I stressed on. And every piece of equipment that this town has purchased for us is accountability, has been signed for, and we know where it's at. And the officers have been advised in our staff meeting that if anything happens, of course, we have to report it. But they're also liable for replacement if they misplace it, lose it or anything. So we're, we're keeping control of, of the monies being spent to get this department going to where we need it, what we talked about. I just wanted to let everybody know that, that it's, it's in progress and we appreciate your input. If you have questions, feel free to come by. The office is a little dusty and all that, but you're welcome to go over there and talk to me, we can sit down, we'll hash out your concerns, whatever you want. That's what we're there for, that is what we're there for, we're there for you. Any questions on that? Yes, sir?
The AR-15 was the only thing taken of value.
The most sensitive, yes. All the rest of the stuff was just drug paraphernalia that we don't.
And some of that was left behind.
Yeah, it was left from the note case that was closed.
No, I mean, some, not all of the drugs were taken, I've heard that, is that true?
No, all, all the drugs that were there, we're talking about marijuana plants.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, those were gone, they, they snatched those.
So is it your conclusion that they, the assault rifle was the intended loot?
No, at this point, I can't, I can't assume that because whoever committed the burglary, I didn't even know that that weapon was there. They just tried breaking into things and then they just tore it apart and then all of a sudden there's an assault rifle. I have addressed that with the individual and they, they're well aware of the mistake they've done. And it's something that, that is an internal thing and that, that's going to be addressed.
What individual?
I'm not going to disclose the, the individual's name because it's a personnel issue, but it shouldn't have been in there.
We're talking about the gun being in the file cabinet.
Oh, Wyatt was there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the reason why, we have two large safes, we have some large safes there that have been purchased some time ago. These things are fireproof, these things are monsters. And, and what I understand at this point, the reason they weren't put in there is because we couldn't find the original combination. So we finally found it, so now the only one that has access to those two big old safes is myself. So that's to cut down more, if there's any blame that's gonna be, it's gonna come on me, that's, that's the whole purpose of that. But I can assure you, any evidence that we collect on the road by my officers, it's documented, it's logged, and it goes into the safe and to prosecution. Every piece of property that's been issued that I picked up in the last week, new items that we have, sensitive items, uh, tasers, a- anything that is police-related that has to be secured is in that safe, and it's inventoried. So that way we know what's in that safe, and who put it there. So that way we know where, we don't have any mishaps, and where's this, where's that? It, it's all accountable, and that's part, that becomes part of my asset that we're building with, uh, the console, that every item that is issued to us, from cars to shoes, whatever, is gonna have an item number that the officers sign for, saying who has that item. And that's just to protect the town in case of insurance or something. We can use a master, uh, asset list, and it'll tell us exactly where these items are at.
I'd like to add, over at Town Hall, I went ahead and already ordered, uh, for the back door, one of the smart, it's, it doesn't use a key card, it just uses the code. I've already ordered that one, and that should be in possibly next week sometime. And now that we're discussing this, maybe perhaps I should get one, another one for MBD and the front door, so we know exactly who has entry of the building at any given time. But they, the whole system runs, uh, eight hundred bucks, eight hundred to nine hundred dollars. So it'll probably come before council next meeting, approval of that. If, if you guys so much.
But in the lobby, the police, when they come in, uh, they, don't they come in through the back door?
Yeah, you're actually the one that brought up, and you wanted that door locked.
Yes.
It's almost impossible to lock that door, because so many people come, like, employee-wise. We go in, we go out, the chief comes in, you know, uh, David comes in, everyone's in and out, that it's just, it's, it's a hassle to be doing it.
It's a safety issue too, because...
But it is a safety issue, yeah, but it is a safety issue, because there are people that come to the hall water, and before you know it, they're like right there, and you're just like, whoa, who are you, like, what are you doing in here? So it is a safety concern, but we needed something that's gonna be like easy, and this gives us that access. So this key code, it's a pin that we put in, it opens the door, and we could go in and out, and only the employees are gonna have pins. The good thing is, you can have, uh, you can set time limits, so, you know, Dennis is only allowed from eight thirty to four thirty, for instance. Then his pin won't work at five o'clock. So it gives us greater, um, uh, secure measures, and as far as employees as well, they're only coming in during the day or whatnot.
And it records who, when, where, when.
And what time, and all that kind of stuff.
But now that we're discussing this, it just dawned on me that we should probably have one on the front two doors, the MBD and, uh, the main lobby, because I was just there a few minutes ago, get the SD card for that, and that would not have recorded my entry, because that's just a standard key. So if we had the key code, perhaps I would...
Well, we would have cameras, and we wouldn't know that it was...
Yeah. Those work very well.
Very well. And you'll find out too.
Yeah. We're gonna show it.
So this is called Operation Barn Door.
Yeah.
We're making it safe for everybody as we can, for not only the employees, but...
Yeah, I just need to stop the, this thing. I mean, I don't know, I, you know, people, I, last time were referred to as, what was the term?
Sanctuary.
Sanctuary city.
A sanctuary city.
Um, I don't think that's true, and, you know, I mean, Mount Air does have its problems, but, I mean, Albuquerque was just voted the number one criminal, you know, place in the world. Uh, so, you know, that does, that does come out. I mean, we're not that far from Albuquerque, and we are, but we're not. So, I mean, we wanna stop the crime, we wanna, you know, do, you know, stop it, but I don't think we're a sanctuary city by any means, so I just want, I hope most of you...
No, I, I, I took exception to that, actually, but that, that implies that the council don't give a shit about what's going on in town, we're trying to defend anything else. It also implies that all her neighbors, brothers and sisters that are don't care about what's going on, and we're sitting here trying every day. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have been interviewing him if that was the case in the other applicant, to try to prevent these type of things. That took a lot of exception, we call it a sanctuary city for drugs, alcohol, and everybody buttoned up. There was, there was, there's been and there wasn't, feel like we're gonna have to stop, find out who all of that, and you're part of it, and here you are. So we have a mean, as far as this council, we don't, I don't look more town to the sanctuary city, that, that just implies that we don't care, we accept it. So that, that was, that was wrong.
And, um, we are making changes, and we had a meeting with the police officers on Friday, and, um, you know, if, if things are changing, and, and things work better. So, um, we will start, we will start seeing that there are, are, are major changes that are happening, and will continue to happen.
Any other questions on safety or security? That you all have any concerns? Like I said, I'm there pretty much a lot of hours, weird hours, so if you see my truck out there, feel free to go in. Like I said, just excuse our, our mess for now, it's working, it's, it's a working plan. And I've been going out a, around the town, meeting everybody, all the homeowners and stuff, and I didn't know I was on Facebook, so they recognized me, and they knew who I was before I knew who they were. But it all worked out, so it's, it's all good. But as far as the officers, like, like Mayor said, uh, we, there are a lot of changes. You're gonna see in the next week or so, you're gonna see this uniform with our patches, that is gonna be our uniform. That is gonna be our duty uniform. The uniform that Officer Torres is wearing is gonna, is gonna be considered what we call Class B uniform, that's used for training, when we go to the range and do something. But when we're out duty and we're working for you, this is the uniform that we, it's easily recognizable. We'll have our patches, uh, hopefully with these, uh, new, uh, vehicles that we're gonna get to, it's even gonna be more identifiable. So when you see black and white unit going down the road, you know that's ours. And, and the agencies have worked with us, uh, the Sheriff's Department and State Police, I've already made contact with them, and you're gonna see them too, doing traffic enforcement, because I've asked them to come in and assist us, because of, you know, we're short officers and stuff. But you're gonna see the, the whole concept change, you're gonna, you're gonna like it. I mean, everybody's gonna know who you are, and, and the officers are, are one hundred percent behind this whole changes, which makes it easier. The console has just been fantastic in supporting us to get to this level. So it's, it's a good thing, it's a good thing, we're all, we're all working on it.
And it just seems like there's something in the air, I mean, two thousand eighteen, you know, we have a new mayor council, we have a new chief of police, we're gonna have a new police station, we're gonna have a new sheriff, and all these things are kind of falling into place, and I, I think it's gonna be beneficial to all of us. Um, you know, I talked to Sheriff, uh, or under Sheriff, Sheriff-elect, uh, Rivera, about having access to our police station, kind of like a little substation for his, uh, Torrance County deputies. So it's just, it's gonna be a big work in progress, and I can see a lot of us, uh, working together to, uh, make things better.
Because I feel in the past, we're part of the county, but we're not part of the county. Because to them, it, it's up north, and the only time, like, the sheriff that's going out, he had his little vehicle out there, oh, there were people in town that provided him a space to put a little sub, oh, yeah, blah, blah, blah. But he never took up on it, and the only time they come in here is to try to outbeat our police to whatever's happening, and if our police get there first, they're turning around and going back. And I feel like we're the forgotten part of the county down south.
Well, we haven't, we haven't, um, we took care of that. I, I had to sit down with, with, uh, the newly-elected Sheriff, uh, Marty, and, um, he told me point-blank that anything that we need, additional officers down here, he's gonna send them. Uh, the call, when we have a call that is dispatched, and it's one of our officers is working, and it's a, a serious call, they're gonna continue to come to back them up, so there's not gonna be canceling anymore, they're coming. And that's already happened this morning, I had a shots fired call this morning, and I, I had two units from SO that said, we're en route, even though myself and, and Shayna were already, excuse me, were already coming up on a call, and they probably were expecting to cancel, and I said, no. Go ahead, continue, because that shows unity for us, because for all we know, we don't know what we're gonna encounter, and we might need help. And if I cancel out, then they're gone, and then I have to call them again? I don't work that way. It's an officer safety issue, when it's dangerous, we're gonna get as many people here that we need, and that's one of the things that, that Marty, uh, promised me, is that we're, even though they're short on officers too, that we're gonna work together. I already talked to the DA's office on cases that are being prosecuted, they're, we're gonna sit down and look at all the cases and see what we have. I'm already working on, uh, warrants on our, our frequent flyers, as you would call them, and probably you all know who those are, and we're getting warrants for those individuals. Their own conditions of release, and they forget that. So they're gonna revoke them, and we're gonna go looking for them, and we're gonna take them into custody.
One thing I've asked of you is, if one of our police officers is taking someone to Santa Fe, please do not stop at someone's bill.
That was addressed at the main number.
That, that was already addressed, the officers were given all these new directives, uh, the mayor has those directives. A directive is, is right now, until I incorporate it into the, our standard operating procedure, it's an order. It's basically an order, the officers already have copies, they alw- we already went through everything on here, we've done everything that needed to be addressed that is considered high priority, and one of them is that, they know they cannot do that, that's illegal.
You did something wrong, you paid your time in Santa Fe, and even if it takes an officer two or three hours to get there, they don't need to stop there. This individual, whoever he might be at the time, had the opportunity to have, would you take me, you know, I, I have this warrant or whatever, or I have what I need to do, but they're waiting until our police takes them, so, to stop there, and I'm not saying they do, but they probably get the right path with the same police that dropped them off there to pay their bail.
Yeah, that practice is done, it's not, it's already been addressed.
Let's go ahead and move on to, uh...
Anyways, on the, uh, cars, uh, these cars, and I, and I made copies for you all, these two cars that are coming from the town of Berna Leo, uh, they're asking five thousand dollars for each unit. These are used cars, they got some miles on them, but the good thing about it, and I think this is where we're gonna win, is they're fully equipped. They have everything we need to do the job, we don't have to buy anything extra. They're, they're coming with everything. Usually, when other departments give or sell to another police agency, they strip these cars down, and all you get is the car, and then you gotta rebuild this car, that costs money, your money. In this situation, they have everything, everything that the officers need, all the safety equipment, the radios, the, the partitions for when we have, uh, suspects in the car, all these vehicles come fully equipped. One of them has a slight damage on a dent on the driver's front, which we can, that's a pulling, that we can get that fixed. The paint job on it, uh, I've already got some, uh, estimates from, from a local, uh, police, uh, vendor in Albuquerque, is, these are white. They're, they, if you seen the little Impala driving around that has the gold and stuff, that, well, that's Berna Leo's, uh, insignia, we're gonna have our own. They're gonna be black and white, and it's gonna have the same thing, police, but it's gonna say, Town of Mount Air. So we gotta put on it, that's all we gotta do, is just put that in there, update our, our radio frequencies, make sure that, that the radios are comparable to what we have right now. And that's basically it, and we're getting these two vehicles for this price, as opposed asking the town council for thirty, forty thousand for a brand new. And I think it's a very, very good deal, uh, there, we don't have to do pretty much anything that, uh, that requires this, and, and Dennis is helping me on this, uh, so we can get this done. They're, they're good running cars, we plan to build up our fleet to a Dodge fleet. We already have, uh, one Dodge Ram, this will be the addition. The cars that the officers are driving right now, the Chevy Impalas, there's, there's good cars, we're gonna keep those cars as backups. So in case these have to go into the shop for maintenance or anything like that, we have fully operational cars there that we, the officers can just pick them up, let's go, and they're back on duty, so we don't lose any time. So that, these are the cars that we're asking the, the town to approve tonight. Uh, the specs are all here, uh, one's a twenty twelve, and the other one, well, both are actually twenty twelve. Uh, one has mileage of ninety-eight thousand, three ninety-five, and the other one has mileage of ninety-one. So as you all know, who has Dodges, Dodgers are good running automobiles. They, as long as you keep them up, these type of cars come with all the heavy-duty suspensions, harnesses, electrical, everything that a police officer's used, because they're used a lot, these vehicles can take that abuse, the streets, the suspension. So we don't have to buy anything, you know, special, they're, they're already there.
And I know the, um, we're gonna have an auction in September, kind of everything kind of popping, automobiles starting coming, all this kind of stuff, so we didn't actually have an auction, but we are still gonna have the auction as soon, as soon as I can, so, um, the stuff in the assault center, the stuff that the, uh, uh, the cars, the old units, we are still gonna auction that stuff.
So all the old units are getting auctioned off, we're not keeping any?
We're keeping, we're keeping the Impalas, uh, the old cars that we talked about, there, those are going. And we're gonna keep the, um, ACO's little pickup truck, kind of like a reserve, the one he's driving right now, our, our animal control, Kenny Aguilar's truck. That thing's kind of got a lot of mileage. We have one of the expeditions that one of the officers was driving, that we just do, have to do some minor repairs. That is what the ACO is gonna be driving as its primary vehicle, because it's, it's, it's a good running automobile. We checked with Chris at the auto shop, and he goes, all you need is some little bit of front-end suspension, and that car's pretty much the best of all the vehicles. Everything else, we're gonna get rid of and try to bring some more money to put back into the fund. But those are the only vehicles that are gonna be operational, it's for ACO and for the officers.
I guess the other thing I'm getting at, because we're gonna have two cars, we're getting two more cars, and we're gonna have one truck, and hopefully buy another truck.
Yeah.
So we're only gonna have two trucks, so when the winter time comes, what are you, what are you gonna do if we have two, own two trucks?
Well, what I, plan I'm doing is, the vehicle that I'm driving right now is four-by-four, and it's fully equipped. When we get the other truck through the grant, on the USDA grant, that's gonna be assigned to me, I'm gonna push this, that truck to the patrol. It's gonna go to patrol, so when we have harsh weather, whatever, we have a vehicle. One of the officers will be assigned to that, and then we'll have our Dodge Chargers, and then we'll have our backup cars that, that if we need them, when the vehicles go down.
And if we need to, uh, yeah, they can use one, they can use the, the patrol truck. So if, if something happens that one of these cannot, like, it snows enough, I mean, last season we ended, and this season it looks like we are, so hopefully, um, but they can use that truck as well, so basically, they will just swap out that.
So that truck's gonna be in the yard, and then maybe it'll, an officer coming.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not gonna be like that all the time, but whenever we see snow coming, yeah.
Yeah, so go have four-by-four capability, and that truck has all the stuff that we need, so we don't have to buy anything, it's under warranty, and the USDA grant, you know. My, my objective is to take each car, like, every year, like, in the fiscal year that comes in, and get new cars through a grant, which is the best way to do it, and that way we replace our aging fleet one by one. So by bringing in these cars now, that's what we're doing, we're phasing out some old cars, and we're bringing in these cars, and then as the fiscal year goes out, we'll ask for a, a new car to replace those cars, and then we sell them off. So it's gonna be like a rotation, so that way we bring some money back and get...
And if we're interested in buying a whole, uh, all Dodge trucks, we, I mean, I'm gonna take that, uh, too, if that one you're not gonna wanna do, but, uh, that's gonna be like yearly, every year we get a new one, you know, so...
So the cars are auctioned off, they're stripping them?
Yes.
Yeah, they're pretty much already...
Pretty much, they're all...
Yeah, right now, they're getting set in the middle of the road without them.
Yeah, I just, that's my only concern, you know, when we have a truck, we can make sure that we have officers respond at the end time.
Yes, absolutely. That's, that's my whole program, get this in there and have something in case we need to go into the back country or something, we have that capability. Yeah, because these Dodge Chargers are good on the road, but they're not that good when they hit the, the dirt roads and the high center. So we're gonna have something to back it up, in case we have to go in there, and it gets really bad, we have four-wheel capability.
Tom? So what am I gonna do with that dent? We're gonna fix it?
Yeah, it's a small dent.
Is it pretty small? Is it pretty small? Looks great, I'm making sure. Well, I just wanna make sure, because, you know, we go over this vehicle policy about, you know, about reporting dents and reporting issues with the vehicles, and a lot of stuff never gets reported. And a lot of stuff never gets fixed as well, you know, a lot of the vehicles with dents in as well, so.
Yeah, we'll fix that.
I was told that there, we have a body shop, somebody here that can do minor stuff, I mean, not heavy-duty, but, yeah, that dent, dent poler will pull that out and redo that. Yeah, I think there is a.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's a few options. Or if we have to, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a, yeah.
So their firm and the prices, I know we tried that last time.
Yeah, so the thing that happened last time we tried, what happens is, they come to a council meeting, they approve it for five thousand dollars. So then if we ask them to do four thousand, and they have to go to a council meeting, they have to ask for four thousand, and then they say it's twenty-five hundred, and then they come and we have to, so it's just like a giant. So that's why we didn't even do it the last time. So, yeah, the, their council approved it for five thousand apiece to let go. So that's kind of what we have to buy.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking the same thing. I was saying, hey, well, we got that dent, it's gonna cost, let's drop it down a thousand dollars, but it's the same process. It's back and forth. But I, we're getting a good deal for, for the money that we're gonna expand at this point. I mean, we're getting two cars under twenty thousand dollars as opposed to buying one car that would cost us twenty thousand dollars for a brand-new Charger, and then another five thousand to almost eight thousand just to put all the equipment on. Even though it's used, you know, because you gotta take it to these people that are certified, and they gotta pay their mechanics. It's a mess. This way, we don't have to mess with nothing. It's a, you know, they've inspected the cars. I don't think they would sell us a bad car. The cars that we have now, they're, they're good running, they're good running cars. You know, I don't think they wanna dip us, because then word gets around.
Make a motion for approval for purchase of Dodge Chargers coming from Bernaleo.
I'll second it.
It's almost like we play that game of not it. Okay, I have a motion on the floor, uh, from Richard to approve the purchase of two Dodge Chargers. A second from Ernie. Roll call, Richard.
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Adrian?
Four.
Nope, yeah, four.
Thank you, thank you. Can't go wrong.
All right, so we have, moving on, approval of resolution twenty eighteen, that's twenty twenty-two, abatement of two oh four West Fifth Street. This is the approval of the building property of two oh four West Fifth Street, belonging to Barbara Mathis and Franco Chuisa. Um, this resolution is approved and published within the next ten days. And these are the, um...
Hey, what's your problem?
And with this abatement, or in fact, this next to me abatement, uh, it doesn't require demolition. It just requires securing the property, but we have to go through a whole process to do process.
That requires demolition.
It does.
Yeah, the shed definitely probably could require demolition. The house itself, if it's, if we determine it to be, um, in working, I mean, like, not gonna fall down, then that, we would just. But that's what it looks like, and that's, um, yeah. Uh, I'm not sure if that was left over from the owner, or if that's someone's been living in there, but, um, we definitely.
What, what happens legally then? They own the property. Do they pay for this?
Yes. Yeah, so what happens is, basically, the town, after ten days, we go in and we send our public works guys in to secure this property. So materials, cost of labor, all that stuff gets accounted to. We send that to the county, um, to the county offices, and basically, we put a lien against the property. So we will have a lien for, so if they sell this house, or they, whatever they're gonna do with it, they will have to, they'll pay off that lien, so.
But if they never do anything with it, you never get your money.
Well, so, there's things that happen. If they're not doing nothing with it as far as like paying taxes and stuff, eventually, they're gonna have, they're just gonna get auctioned off. And in that particular situation, then, it happens. Actually, uh, one of our public works guys, there was a building, probably kinda close to that, next to him. He bought the property, cleared it out. Now he has a brand-new, uh, nice, uh, front area, so. People don't buy things, you know, fixed yet. They buy it to clear it out and have a nice, a, a, a chalane. I think he paid seven hundred dollars for it. I mean, these things go for real cheap, but obviously, if we have a lien against it, it's gonna go for a little bit more, because then we get paid off for that, for the materials and stuff. But we would have to see that, that shed. We would have to actually look at that shed. That shed actually looks like it may have to come down, depending on, on the way, you know, we have to see, I don't know.
No, little speckle.
But for sure, the building itself, if you look at the building itself, it looks pretty secure. We would require an engineer to come in and actually deem it. We wouldn't have to go with an engineer.
Do you have a, uh, do you give them like an itinerary or inventory of stuff that they need to fix to satisfy the?
If they were to respond to the letter, yes. So basically, if we were to send you, let's say this was your home, and we sent you a letter, you come and say, okay, what's wrong with it? And we would say everything. I'm just saying. But no, what we would say is, you know, you need to secure the building. You need to clean it up, clean up the yard, that kind of stuff.
So you have a list?
Yes, yes. There's a reason, yes, for the original, for him to put this on the list, on his list. There's a long list of items that need to be done, including cleaning. Of the three that's on here, we actually have a fourth that's been, it's, was gonna come on here, but he made contact with the owner, and she's interested in donating it to the town. If, like he, like you said, he made a whole list of what they need to do. They need, this is demolished. They have to. We're not trying to, we just wanna clean up. Well, we wanna make it safe. And we want people to, to be part of that. If they choose to, if they choose not to and to ignore us. And sometimes they ignore us because they don't know, but unfortunately, that's not our fault. They need to change their addresses with the county, because that's what we go off of. So some of these people may have an address in Albuquerque, and then they moved to Los Angeles. They didn't update it with the county, and we're sending letters to, uh, to Albuquerque. But that's not our fault. We've done our, that's what publishing paper does as well. So if they move to Moriarty, and we're sending it to Albuquerque, they'd say, hey, my camp, my property in, in Mount Air is getting messed up. And the second thing is, this is a, an attractive nuisance. Criminals don't wanna stay in there. So that's primarily the biggest reason, is we need to be able to secure all these properties, so nobody spots that.
Where's this at, guys?
This is at the southern part of, all the way down.
Do you know where Carter Teed lives?
Down that way, like in that corner.
Okay.
There's a map.
Yeah, I still.
Like here, Carter Teed lives here. Just drive all the way down to the end. Mrs. Harrison Road, like, I, trench house. This property already, like, funny?
That's the same process we did with the, with Moriarty, right?
Exactly.
You reached out, you know.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little different, because we're not gonna totally demolish it all, because some of it still looks good, and we could just probably, you know, board it up and stuff. But, um, see, in this particular case, we wish that they would, so that when they get to take care of it, and actually not board it up or fix it, or sell it, or something, but. And we may continue communication, try to, um. So again, let's see, for proof tonight, this, we're going to the independent for ten days. After that ten days, that's when we go in and we, we start, uh, do more needed.
Each individual, one, you wanna, a motion on that?
Yeah, we have to. We have to, yeah. So we're gonna go, so this is just for this property, right?
This is item thirteen, we're talking about, right?
Right, correct.
So I'm making a motion for approval of resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-two, abatement of two oh four West Fifth Street.
A second motion.
Right, I'm motion by Ernie, I mean, yeah, by Ernie, sorry, to approve the resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-two, abatement of two oh four West Fifth, a second by Juanita. Roll call, Richard.
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Adrian?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
Right, motion practice. Okay, so the next agenda item is approval of resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-three, abatement of property at four hundred block of South Ripley Avenue. And that, we don't have an actual address in, in the, I mean, I'm sure we could buy it, but, uh... It's labeled as four hundred block of South Ripley Avenue, and that, it's, it's part of. It's actually just kind of corner two, the last, uh, the other. The last one was right here, this is the garage. Oh, that one is the spot. No, no, it's actually owned by a state. Or LLC, Slavian County LLC. And they did not respond to the law. None of these. So again, we would have to take a look at the shed. The shed, um, doesn't look in the best condition, but they've left. The building itself looks like in good condition, but we do need to board up the windows, um, and take care of all that kind of stuff. Do we go in and actually remove the property? I don't think we would, because that's not the safety hazard. The hazard is our public hazard. Well, if we determine, if we determine the shed, because actually, that looks like the shed, right? No, it's the garage. Well, the garage, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's all together. It's all locked. Because there's this. Yeah. There's that seat. And then the back door. So that picture is just the internal picture from right here. So if that is, is unstable, then we would actually tear it all, because we would tear it all.
You did say we only have squatters, then?
No, I think she saw the matches, um, and the matches that counts, the entertainment center and the retirement. I was worried, I was worried that this will be the next location that our friends stay at, so that's why Kenny must get on.
What are the, what are the, uh, the timeframe dates again, as far as serving them ten days, what, put it into the?
We, we publish for ten days, and then we can go. We gave them sixty.
Okay.
Yeah, sixty days. We gave them sixty days.
And then we already tried to.
Yes. They didn't respond to us, so then, um, these are, these are already the past sixty. I think these are already like at seventy something, because of the technical meeting, um, and then ten extra days from today. So, well, tomorrow.
So then it gets published for ten days, and then?
Right.
And then?
And depending on when the newspaper, when's the newspaper cut out?
Friday.
Friday. So they would actually go off on Friday, go out on Friday, so it'd be ten days from Friday. Yeah. And then at that point, we would send in our public works, depending on their schedule and stuff.
After those ten days?
Yes. Obviously, we can't take care of all three in one day, but, you know. They will be under this.
Puts a lot on you guys, huh? A lot of extras.
It does.
Oh, yeah, there's gonna be more on that. Uh, the ACO slash code enforcement is gonna step it up on these properties around town that are gonna have to go into this abatement, so there'll be more.
Puts a lot on the public works guys, too, you know, just take away from what they're doing normally, and to go in there.
We can always contract it up, because we're taking a hit, basically, on you, public workers.
They're fire hazards, the criminals would like to use them to do their little drugs, and all it does is mess it up for everybody.
With any demolition, if it's residential, we don't need to get a demolition permit, but if it's commercial structure, we have to get a demolition permit from a licensed contractor. Luckily, Jess is a licensed contractor, and he got thirty-five bucks for the demolition permit for a PD. I really wish, um, these people would contact us and wanna sell it. Yeah. Jess, in fact, Jess used to own that building, and he sold it for eighty thousand dollars. Would be nice, but again, they're not responding, so.
Somebody at LLC, what would you want them to do quicker? He's got the LLC.
Yeah, unless they're just using that to try to protect their private assets, but LLC doesn't protect too much.
Any questions on that?
All right, do I have a motion? Those are? Make a motion for approval of resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-two, abatement of two oh four West Fifth Street.
I'll second it.
Do the program just start to work? Yes. Four, at least at four hundred block of.
I'm sorry, abatement of property at four hundred block of South Fifth.
Sorry, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
Um, we have a motion to approve the resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-three, abatement of property four hundred block of South Ripley. A second by Ernie. Roll call, Richard.
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Adrian?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
All right. Uh, moving on, approval of resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-four, abatement of five hundred South Roosevelt Avenue. This is the approval of abatement of property at five hundred South Roosevelt Avenue, belonging to Rose and Mary, the block two. Uh, this resolution is approved and published within the next ten days. And again, this is in the same neighborhood. It's just, the last one we were talking about is this one. The first one, we're talking about this one, and this one's just right here, next one. And this one is mainly probably just, um, boring out.
It's not, so.
Yeah, that one's got some bad walls.
Oh, does it?
On the north side. It's all buckled out, that radiator.
Really? Oh.
And then that other one's, uh, the ceiling and all that's like ready to, actually.
Rose didn't get back?
Yeah.
No?
Within the next ten days, perhaps if we know a family member that can reach out to her, to talk to Kenny.
Is this Rose Lovato that we know?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, she lived right there with.
Yeah.
Six minutes. Oh, you remember, huh?
Yeah.
No, it's just where she didn't get it, happened to fall.
I heard, my company wasn't hers, but.
I thought it wasn't hers either. Well, according to the county, we go off the county website, so. We go off the public work, work of the county.
It's like you say, they don't change their address.
And who knows? Maybe she doesn't know. Maybe if someone, I mean, we don't go to their house and look for them, we just send a letter, so.
Twice a year, I'll tell her, you know what I mean? It's weird that she, that, you know.
And again, like we did with Sami Moriarty, I mean, as long as it gets taken care of, that's what we really want. I mean, in a way, we really don't want it to go through the whole process, because then we're out, honey, but.
First one, I'm sure, is this place is, you go in there and look, see, look, see if there's water in it as well, or no?
Um, I think he tries to. I mean, obviously, he has to be, you know, safe. You never know if somebody is actually in there. So you gotta kind of, you know. And also, I don't, I'm not sure if we can actually enter the prop, inside the property, correct? Like, would that be, you need required a search warrant?
Well, i- i- if it's going into abatement, then once the resolution is passed, pretty much we have control on it. We can board it up for safety reasons, but as it stands right now, during the process, if the owner is not available, we can only go in on what they call the safekeeping act. If, like, somebody goes in there, like kids or drug addicts, then we can, but other than that, if it goes into full abatement, yeah, we would need the permission from the owner.
And I think that's why Moriarty, the pictures are right at the edge of the town. He didn't actually go into town.
I would actually like to see that one completely dump, because it is, on the north side of it, completely, the wall.
And we'd have to take a look at it, yeah, we could, we, we have to.
Can, could this one also make that big relation, or?
Uh, I'm not sure, because, uh, this is a, basically, a, they're taking, we're taking their property away, and something of this magnitude would might require a structural engineer to sign off on it. Like, code enforcement officer just can't make that determination himself, because he's not.
Yeah, if there's something with the structure, and it's unsafe, like you're saying, I'm told us, then we would need a, a structural engineer to say, condemn it.
Yeah.
Because it's not safe. Then you can close it up, put the signs up, saying it's condemned property. There's a procedure that you.
Yeah, we would, we would have to take a look. If we think that, that it would fail a structural test, then we can, we can hire a structural engineer. And again, we would hire, we would be out, maybe that, that would be on the. So we would have to take a look. I didn't, I haven't seen the other side of the wall, so, um, I'll probably go with Kenny this Friday. Kind of go take a look at all of them. Like I said, it would be really nice to go.
That's my mission.
Donovan, are you ready, Richard?
Yeah, down the street, yeah.
All right, well, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion into, for approval of resolution twenty eighteen dash fourteen, abatement of five hundred South Roosevelt Avenue.
I think he said twenty eighteen dash fourteen.
What did I, twenty-four, twenty, uh, uh, approval of resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-four, uh, abatement of five hundred South Roosevelt Avenue. Ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Seconding it.
All right, we have a motion by Ernie to approve resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-four, abatement of five hundred South Roosevelt, a second by Richard. Roll call, Richard.
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Adrian?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
All right, motion passes. Approval of resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-five, budget amendment, creating two new funds, town department is. Uh, yeah, basically, there's two funds that we need to kind of create, um, to account for some hard dollars. Uh, right now, uh, we've got a grant for welfare and education prevent, and prevention program grant for the fire department. The problem is, uh, the fire department does not have a separate, uh, fund, separate from the state fire marshal's fund that we get. So that would be co-meaning funds. So I propose that we create a separate fire department fund. Police department has our public safety, which is the police department's fund, but then it also has, um, uh, LEPF, the law enforcement protection fund, which is comparable to the fire fund. Uh, EMS, the same way, we have an ambulance fund, and we have an EMS fund, but fire department does not.
Uh, EMS, the same way, we have an ambulance fund, and we have an EMS fund, but fire department does not have a separate entity as a town fund, that's, we can put money into however we want. We could create, get a donation that you do, or fill the boot program, and fill the, this fund with that. So that creates the fire department fund, and we simply inject it with, uh, the forty-seven hundred dollars for the grant, that would give us a start. And the second one is the motion picture production fund that we were, um, discussing, we just stuck in a general fund, but when it's buried in the general fund, it could be spent on something, anything we want. And if we really want to restrict it, we should go ahead and create a fund for that, and that's what I propose.
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty eighteen twenty-five to create new funds, nine items.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Juanita for approval of resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-five, budget amendment creating two new funds, or nine items, a second by Richard, roll call Richard, four, Juanita, four, Adrian, four, Ernie, four. Approval of road closure of Main Street from Highway fifty-five to Ripley, um, so as we know, the carnival committed to town, they started loading up their stuff. Um, he doesn't think that he's gonna use Main Street, but I still wanna have that option, just in case that he does. Um, and the homecoming dance may be a, a street dance this year, so I propose that will resolve for them if they need to. Both of these actually look very highly unlikely, I just talked to him, he said he probably wouldn't need it. Um, the high school, I believe, is actually gonna use the middle of the plaza, that, um, area under the tent for that one night, um, so that they can have a little dance there. Um, so this is very unlikely that this would actually happen, but I do wanna get approval, just in case we have to, I'm not like, kind of, you know, we, it's already done, so we can do it. This looks, uh, closed, depending if it's just like, or it says that the carnival needs to use it, it would be from Friday afternoon, or Friday, uh, Friday morning, actually, until Monday morning, um, while he moved his equipment. And then if the homecoming dance just used it, then it would just be Saturday night. So again, both of these look very highly unlikely, but, um, I would like approval, just in case, if they do come back and say, you know what, you rented it, and actually we might have to pick you up on your offer, so. And this would be right in front of the Shaker Hotel, uh, South Highway fifty-five to Griffin, the Rangers, uh, ceiling is.
You're putting up a small tent?
We're putting up a small tent on Thursday. It's gonna be used primarily for, uh, tables and chairs, so when people grab a bite to eat, they can go in and, and relax there. On Saturday night, though, it will not be used for tables and chairs, we'll clear those out, and it's looking like the dance is gonna be there, so.
Oh, the dances this weekend as well?
The hi, uh, homecoming dance. And this is Friday night, I said Saturday night, Friday night, I pulled it up.
What days are the, are the carnival here?
Uh, this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
The dance will be Saturday night?
The dance will be Friday night, and it's not a public dance, it's a homecoming dance.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Homecoming dance, yes, school.
So we had a poll at the school, a lot of people were like, oh my god, it's so unfair not to have a homecoming dance. But the thing about it is, is we had a poll at the school, on Friday night after the game, are you gonna go to the carnival, or are you gonna go to the homecoming dance? Seven people said the homecoming dance. So.
So the others confused then?
So, the seventy kids are gonna be at the carnival, and we're gonna be chaperoning seven kids at the high school dance, so that's the reason that we combined them both. We just figured, we will put it together, you know, adults will not be allowed to go into the, to the area where the, the homecoming dance is, and that kind of thing, so.
So let it up for me, whether the carnival's in the, in the burn area.
Burn, burn area?
Dance.
And the dance is gonna be inside the middle of the plaza. So there are gonna be some carnival stuff, maybe in, you know, small stuff in the, in the plaza, or on the street, if they choose to. It's gonna be in the middle of the plaza, because of plaza, that's what it's called.
Where?
In front of the shaker.
In front of the shaker.
Plaza. Oh, and the, stop saying the plaza, the word? Oh, high birds, okay, all right. Well, if you say plaza, I'm asking you words of plaza, what are you talking about?
There's the walkways, and then that centerpiece.
Okay.
And the school, just, uh, on other, is, uh, having a winter ball, so they will, you have to wear those dresses at some point. For those that are on, can't wear their dress to the homecoming, or will not. I make a motion to approve the road closure of Main Street.
All right, can you try ripping?
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion by Adrian to approve the road closure of Main Street from Highway fifty-five to Ripley, a second by Ernie, roll call Richard.
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Adrian?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
All right. Thank you. All right, I'm on there, but we did add a department head reports, uh, usually it's first is the first guy. Or is it police? Oh, it's police, sorry.
I'll go first, but you're not one of the police.
Okay.
I got a lot of stuff.
Everybody's looking at me.
Always like.
Okay.
All right, what I'm, what I'm gonna do is, um. This report is, is from, for the month of September. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna try to cut it down in the next council meetings, is to give you the information that we need, um, that's vital, statistical stuff. Uh, calls for service, traffic enforcement, arrests, and so forth, so that way we can kind of narrow it down. Because this is actually what, with the information, there's some, there's personal information on, on, on this, what we call a police blotter, of course, we don't wanna say who and what. So I'm gonna leave out some information, and then we'll take it from there. According to the calls for service on nine six of eighteen, uh, there was a traffic stop, uh, with a driver on Highway fifty-five and Fifth Street, broken tail light. Uh, everybody was checked out, certain individuals had outstanding warrants, and they were arrested. Um, it involved the Berlin, uh, Berlin Police Department, they had some information, they were looking for an individual, but they couldn't produce, because when we run people from another agency, we have a half an hour to verify if that individual is wanted or not. If they can't verify within that thirty minutes, we have to release them, or else we're continuing them illegally. So apparently, this individual got lucky, because Berlin couldn't, uh, find him. Uh, the other individuals were transported to the Santa Fe detention, so that ended that one. Another, on the same day, there was a report of a missing person, a police report was taken, and apparently, this person has not been seen, seen since twenty-ten in Las Lunes. So they were, the officers were able to contact, uh, parents in Las Lunes, they made a report, and apparently, it turned out that the victim that was missing was suffering from paranoia and schizophrenia. Uh, they did find him, but he was arrested in South Lake City, Utah. So we solved that case, it was done, he was in South Lake City. Um, they got information, and they were able to contact a family member here in Mount Air that kind of verified that he was okay, so the missing person wasn't actually missing, they were somewhere else. On nine-ten, we received a call of rape, uh, Officer Nazaro handled that call, and involved a student, and apparently, the student was taken to an encasement for evaluation. And there was a report done, uh, CYFD and Torrance SO were notified, and the case is still under investigation at this point, uh, because it involved allegations of being raped at gunpoint. Uh, so we're working with the DA's office, and CYFD, and the SO to get this case completed. Since it's a juvenile, we can't mention, we cannot mention her name. On the same day, another juvenile problem, Officer Nazaro was dispatched to the elementary school where there are a missing child, uh, was reported. Uh, after searching the area, the child was found hiding in the moss and found bin. And we talked to the therapist, so he's okay.
First place to look.
Well, we did, they did a search, and he found, he was hiding out. So that, that got taken care of. On nine-eleven-eighteen, Officer Torres was dispatched to Highway sixty, turn his RV, in reference to a, uh, black and Chevy truck racing around the grass area. They made contact with the driver, they ran him for warrants, and, uh, they were pretty aggressive with the officer. Uh, Officer Torres was able to make contact, and advised not to go into the area, and everything was okay. There was no damage to any property at the RV department. On nine-twelve, an information report was taken by Officer Nazaro, in reference to a domestic involving, uh, one of our frequent flyers. And everything turned out okay, because they're, they were just trying to get each other in trouble due to a restraining order. And, uh, so now, everything's been taken care of on that particular call. Happens, you know, they get involved, and they start blaming each other. On nine-two, the, we got a call of drug overdoses, uh, South Ripley, uh, I guess we know who lives there. Uh, they were called, there was loud noise in the bathroom, officers went to check, we found no male, lying on the floor, not breathing. They were able to revive him with Narcan, and he was transported, uh, in the ambulance, and he was sent home after EMS arrived, so they're, I guess they did take him to the hospital, so I guess he's okay at that point. So what I'm gonna do is, with this type of calls for service, I'm gonna forward emails to all the town council, advise them of all the calls for service, because it contains a lot of personal information, and we don't want, you know, everybody. So they will have, it's called a police blotter, so the next time when I do a presentation, it's gonna be more stat-driven, it's to citations, enforcement, abatements, everything, dog calls, everything that we need to know of what we're doing on a daily basis. The council will be up on it. I think it's, it's a lot better, uh, for it, and we avoid the, unless it's something really serious, then that the council and the town needs to know, then it will be put out. But for the privacy of victims, witnesses, most of this information is gonna be kind of cut down, and we'll just kind of give general information. Okay, any questions? Report crimes, I've been getting a lot of calls, where a lot of people are delaying, because they don't wanna bother us, please don't. If you see it, report it, call the Sheriff's Department, because all calls go through the Sheriff's Department, dispatch, and they will dispatch us. We have to report it in order to make, make it worthwhile, we pay the county a certain fee for that service, so we're trying to report everything, I don't care what it is. If you have a problem, you see it, whatever time it is, that way we can document it and respond to it. I've been having several business owners come up to me, say, well, yeah, I had something go down, but that was five days ago. And then it's like, you already contaminated the scene, I can't do that, so all we can do is a report, and that's not really how we wanna do it. We wanna get there when you see it, so we can address it. That's, that's what I'm trying to push for, is to get everybody to report it right away, no matter how minor you think it is, if it's important to you, it's important to us. And, and that's when I, that buys my officers, when they're out patrolling, hit the areas hard, check on the senior folks, you know, check on the, the areas, because that's how we're gonna prevent crimes occurring. If, if we don't get out there and do something about it, but I, I really, really ask that you report the crimes, like, right away, it, it's the best way to do it.
Any questions? I just have a work quick, oh, a couple of questions, but I guess when you're, you're, when you're in comments, when you're saying, do you know where the registered sex offenders are in this town?
Yes.
You're in?
Yeah. The SO has a list of all the registered sex offenders, we had a couple of calls of, certain sex offenders being like on the boundary by the schools, they know the limit before they can get violated. So I've, I've asked the officers to keep a lookout on all the guys that are registered here in Mount Air, there's a few. And we keep updated on it. There's actually a nap that you guys can use, if you go on the New Mexico DPS app, that has sex offenders, and you, and it's free, and you just put in some information, and it'll tell you who's in your area. And if new ones come in.
Yeah, yeah, there's four of them. And I, I looked that up after that kind of issue came up a couple of weeks ago, and the state ordinance, or state statutes doesn't prohibit them living within three hundred or five hundred feet, there's no proximity, uh, restriction from them. So I asked municipal league, if we, as a government body, we can pass an ordinance creating that, and they said no. That's one of the few things that we don't have, we can't create greater restrictions on, is with sex offenders, unfortunately.
What happens if they're within, you said within three hundred?
Nothing, that's what we said, there's no.
But, um, you said, the schools you said as are, if there's an actitugor or whatever, and they need to go to their safe place, what if they're going by one of them?
Basically, uh, there's like a terms of release, I believe that's the term is?
All sex offenders, when they're convicted, they, they give them a timeframe of two, they're, they're for life, depending on the crime, some of them have shorter time spans. But they give them conditions of release, indicating what they cannot do, like be around school, be around children. Some sex offenders that are registered can't even be around their own kids, that's how bad it is, and they can't be.
Do we have that information for those four, and are we able to get it?
Yeah, the SO will, will supply it, because the SO is responsible for this area, each county has a designated, uh, uh, agency. Torrance County is designated for the sex offender registry, and then also probation and parole provides a lot of information, because they have most of them on probation for something, or parole. So they keep us updated, and, and the list, if somebody moves in from another state, fails to register, they're in violation, we can arrest them based on that. But then we have to go through the SO for them to file a complaint towards that state, and then the state has to issue a warrant. Sometimes it's a little process, but as long as we keep at, you know, of the ones that are in here, the area, they know that we're watching, and, and the SO has an opinion there on them. And the conditions, because we have to ask for them, say, what are the conditions on these guys?
Yeah, I think you get a couple of those conditions for each of those four, because.
Yes, sir.
Two of them live within three blocks of the school.
Didn't one of them move?
One of them was moving too, yeah.
I know we have one totally that I have heard that it is, uh, what are you calling, molester or whatever, but I know a two-door down, there's children in that house.
Oh, no, I'm sure there's a children in the house. And there's, I don't know, by your house, some were up there.
There was.
No, they moved.
No, they moved.
That's how we, this whole issue came up, is we got county involved, county, not SO, but county, uh, code enforcement. And then we got him on that angle, and he kinda shoot them away, and they moved over to a different location.
The code enforcement is a real, real good way of getting rid of a lot of undesirables, by going after the property that they're, that they're in, because it gives us probable cause as officers, because we just can't go in and say, hey, you gotta move. But if we go in there, we code enforcement, and, and condemn a place, say this is unsafe, and they continue using it, now we have probable cause to go in there to see the conditions of the home, if there's children there, or they're, or they're homestating, whatever. It gives us more teeth, so when we do an abatement, and we can file charges on them criminally, it goes and it's dead. It, it's a big thing, a lot of cities are doing it now, they're using code enforcement to shut down businesses that are bad, their properties, it's a good tool. And, and, and I suggest that we, we're using it here, and we're gonna use it more, if we can't get on the property another way, we can actually look into it through code enforcement.
And I recommend, if you have not, if you don't know the quarter, I recommend going on, uh, and, and Google with, Google for. Because it's always good to know, it's a good thing, um, to know, especially if you have young children or grandchildren that, that prevent your property.
Yeah, you gotta protect the kids and everybody.
Website? Uh, if you actually go to TorranceCountyNM dot org.
Org.
TorranceCountyNM dot org.
Okay.
And then you click on, uh, Departments, and then you click on Torrance County Sheriff. About mid-page, it says, uh, Sex Offender Registry or something like that, you click on that, and then, um, you just kind of, I, I can't remember exactly what you click, but, um.
Certainly.
Yeah, there's a, there's a search function at one point, and you could put city, and then you could search Mount Air in the form. Seems great stuff, especially with what I've learned, I learned this up to now.
Yeah, yeah, they try to keep them updated, and there's always changes, but some of them move themselves, I mean, they, they feel the pressure from the community, they don't wanna be around, so they say, hey, this is not a good place for me to operate, and they go somewhere else, which is good for us.
So we still have the four here?
Yes.
Yes.
We have three, one is on the.
Yeah, I, I, I knew about the other two, lately I.
Yes, ma'am. So we're gonna, we're gonna keep working with the SO on that to keep us updated, because there's always people moving in. I mean, they, they find out, hey, there's a small town, we can do this, that's how they come in, they creep in. And if we don't stay on top of it, it's too late by the time we know it, it's like, well, who's this character? Yeah, so we got, we gotta keep really active with that.
And we may do a training over at Town Hall, because whomever moves the town has to get town utilities. So if we can get us prompted to know how to identify one, or I don't know how that crosses the line of like certain seizure, but like if she suspects someone might be a sex offender, maybe she could do a background check?
The app, the app that that the mayor's talking about with the SO, those are their files, so they can search, but you can go on that DPS app and he can search statewide.
Well, what I'm saying is before they register, they try to sneak into town without registering. For instance, with this case that we were just discussing, they moved from that one property to another and if it wasn't for the code enforcement officer at Orange County, I'm sure they probably would not have talked to Lindsay about, "I gotta move over here."
Yeah, yeah, they're they're very sneaky. I mean, those are the ones we definitely have to watch, because they like hanging around schools and small towns, because they figure they can groom their people. Yeah, it's a, it's not a good deal for the community, so, yeah, we're gonna stay up all night.
You said you had a few questions? Oh, I just had, yeah. So no, another frequent flyer here in Mount Mary, and a topic in a lot of our meetings, Mr. Lewis, you know, he's been all these times, problems with us in town. I guess the other day he had a screwdriver in his hand, like, is that one of my employees? And I kinda heard after the fact, but I just kinda curious if there's a different angle or maybe what you...
We're talking about Jason. Jason is is a is a little problem. He likes to skirt the issues. I responded personally to three calls already on this guy. And every time I get there, he's outside the property, nobody can place him on the property, because we have trespass notices on it.
We do have video though, right?
We have video, but he knows that, so he's playing the game. He showed up at at the Town Hall the other day and started acting weird and I told him, "Get rid of him." He wants to move to Socorro, that's where his parents, they have a household. So I'm gonna talk to Judge Riley to see his condition, he's all, he owes some money to pay her and if she could transfer him to the Socorro probation. Because that's what he wants, he doesn't wanna stay here. He he already knows that we don't want him here, so he's already said that. Now, the officers already know that if he poses a threat, I don't care where it is, to the officers or to the regular people, taking him in custody, he's not exempt, I mean, he's, he'll go to jail. But he does walk around with that screwdriver and he does, you know...
He's got a big knife.
Yeah, and a knife and all that, and now he's trying to get his guns back.
And his sword.
And his sword. Well, that's not gonna happen because of his mental situation. His site counselor, he brought me a letter the other day that said that he's not a threat to anybody. Well, then what is he doing? Going to the Seven Eleven, going to the Town Hall, going to all these places, and he aggravates people. He pushes people who tried to get him to do something. So the the counselor is one of those, while we treated him and this is what we see. He knows how to play the system, but I already told the officers, I said, "From now on, get all the evidence you can, get the witnesses. We we physically have to see him commit a misdemeanor in our in our presence. But if we have videos showing that he steps over that line, he's going to jail. We've done reports on him already and he knows how to play the game." And then he drives that stupid truck all over the road. I said, "You see him on the road and he's doing something dumb, pull him over, sign him if you have to." We gotta build a case on him, because he's almost done here with probation. All he has to do is pay a hundred bucks and then he's done. So he thinks he's gonna get all his guns back and knives and all, no. I I feel he's a threat, I really do. But we gotta do it the legal way. The more stuff we have on him, the better we can address it to a judge and say, "Look, this guy's causing a problem there." You know, put something on him.
That's just every week, you know, community's helping everybody.
Yeah, they are. I mean, they, he goes to the the Cathay Ancient Cities and goes in there and then goes out and he tells, "Leave," and he'll leave and then he'll come back. And then he just keeps going, just like a little, one of those rabbits, you know?
He was at the the Town Hall the other day, we were having a meeting, and he was like standing at the window, like looking inside, and I'm just like, hello? It blows my mind. Do we have a couple of questions?
Well, the Sunday after church, they stopped him. And they knew the sheriff, but they didn't do nothing to him, they didn't go. So I think that's why he left on his job, you know, he didn't...
Yeah, the sheriff came on another call and they took a report, but they didn't, they didn't do anything, because he wasn't on the property when it got there, but if he was, they would have taken, but the sheriff's done reports, we've done reports.
Then he went to the house, tried to sell me some tools to buy gas.
Yeah, it's always trying to bum money from somebody for gas.
I was just gonna say that he came by the day before yesterday and he, it actually was yesterday, and he had a three gallon thing of gas. And he wanted to buy gas from us so he could get to work, but he needed about ten dollars for it, he could buy gas. I told him, "Sorry," and I told him, "Right, just right out, we don't, we don't do gas before you know it."
One day he went to my house and told me to pay five dollars for gas, so I took him to go take gas and then he asked me for a cup of coffee. So I got him a cup of coffee and he wanted cigarettes, but then I told him, "I'm not, I'm leaving you here, I'm not going with you."
He shows up at your business, at your house, just report it. Report it, so that way we can build a case. I mean, he's, if he's begging for stuff, that's that's beggar, see, there is a law that we can get him on that. But we gotta build it, that's the only way. Unfortunately, I mean, he's already gotten all the help he can from the state and they say that he's not a threat. I mean, come on, you know?
Well, I was just gonna say, while we're at it, get the new police vehicles, I know they're there at, you know, the Town Hall, but in the future, at least if we can move there once in a while, because for a while, they're just kinda standing there. I know you moved today, but...
Yeah, no, we're gonna talk about that. We actually talked about, we're gonna have a discussion on certain items for a future, a future meeting. Possibly the state home policy and that's gonna come back up, so we'll discuss that.
I try helping me with, because I don't get them yet.
Any other questions?
I know we have to review that. We are gonna, yeah, we'll bring that up as a discussion and...
All right, so let's go ahead and move on, David?
Okay. Okay, on Friday, September fourteen, Vince went to the wells, guys serviced equipment at the shop and we had a safety meeting. I'll just skip the well part, I I went and rewrote it, but anyways. On Monday seventeen, the guys worked on the water meter and meter box. We replaced, actually, we we had a water leak and I forgot to put the address, but it was over in South, well, Ripley and Fish Street. And the guys rigged meters on Tuesday the eighteen, guys rigged meters on Wednesday the nineteen. Uh, David, I made a mistake there. David met with the plumber at the elementary school, this was in regard about the, that made a gas meter that the... Actually, our meter wasn't hit, but the line, the the service line on the school side was hit and had done some damage to that, so because of that, they had to redo their their service line. And in the process, that's one of the places that we put one of those turbine meters. So that's what we did on that. And also, Carl and Daniel worked on the on the valve at Willowell, and that was Willowell number two. Vince, Edward and Vince cleaned cleaned the warehouse, and that was here in town and the one at Cooper. And Friday the twenty first, guys worked at the shop and had an afternoon safety meeting. Monday the twenty fourth, Carl and Edward adjusted cameras at City Hall. Daniel and Vince worked on, worked at the sewer pump and guys worked behind the school. And that was again at the secondary school. Tuesday the twenty fifth, guys worked on elementary school filling, filling in the fault with new, well, with concrete. I kinda messed up on that as well. So anyways, it's just, we we put six-inch pipes and they're about five feet high and we we put, we put a total of five of them around that gas meter, make sure that this time if somebody hits it, they're gonna, they're really gonna fill it. So anyways, we did that. And what else did we do? And at four twenty-five, we all, everyone started working on sewer trouble at one oh three South Ross and Highway sixty. That is a ten, I believe it's a ten-inch ridge and and it required all of us, because we were working on one side and then the other, so it required all of us to be there and and work on that. I had done a one call on that, however, we were fortunate enough that it it broke through and we were able to get it going again. I'm still working on the machine. All the parts that we had ordered for that, the old sewer machine, there's probably about three different gears, bushings and another gear that was not exactly, I guess, made right. So Edward Padilla, he's a machineist, they're out of the land, and he took those parts and actually had them redone for us and no charge. So that's the reason why we're prolonging on that sewer machine. Trying to get it going, so once we get it going and hopefully by next week I'll get it going, then we can start rattle out all this sewer main that we're having problems with periodically and that. So anyways, and then Wednesday, Carl checked in service, Carl, Vince took water samples to Albuquerque and this was from the the sewer pump that he took. Guys install water, water service at Akama and North Wilson. It's a new service that we we put for a customer renter in the corner, so they did that on Wednesday. And then the twenty seventh, replaced gas meter at Steve Sanchez residence. And Vince dug up a pit, Daniel and Vince dug up a pit at the airport for the burn, for the bonfire. And Carl and they were working on valves and the valves, what I mean is gas valves, which I didn't put that down. So anyways, we've been doing a lot of stuff, trying to catch up on a lot of things. So that's pretty much what we have for right now.
David, when you get a chance, just before I forget, do you give me pictures of that new sewer machine, the new, but the one that we don't use? Again, because I switched to a phone and...
That's fine.
Um, so I had looked up info on that machine and we were hoping to look at getting like a different type of rod to see if that would work and see if it would work with our tree. The rods are like over two thousand dollars a piece. So I don't know if that's a test that we want to want to to try or not. Unfortunately, it really sucks, but it's pretty expensive, do you think that...
The rods are two thousand dollars?
Yeah, it was pretty expensive.
For a rope?
Yeah, for the different type, the one that I thought. What are they all right now?
I know there's still rods.
Yeah, I think it was the fiberglass?
Yeah, I think somebody had had recommended against that for ours, I don't know. I I can't remember, I think it was Darian Chester's term that...
I know steel's not doing well, that's why we're not using it, so that's why you figured maybe fiberglass would be better. But it was, it was pretty expensive for the for the fiberglass rod. So it was kind of one of those things like, if it's a test, I mean, is it something that's worth that test? If it's kind of like not worth the test, but if not, we really need to to sell it. We really need to figure out who can use it or why, or it's just sitting there. Now, if you look at all that, we can all do all that.
Is this the one that one time we were gonna try to sell to Albuquerque?
Yes.
That was a lemon rat and a get-go.
Yeah. Did you go to that site?
Yes, I did.
Any questions for David? Sorry, we do need to, once he gets me that info, I'll look at, I'll see and try to contact someone out quickly and see what we can try to figure out. But I did look for those other rods and they were kind of like, whoa, like...
And again, I did talk to, I'm terrible with names, but Titar's assistant. And he said that he's got the stuff and we need to get together, try to get together again before winter to do all the trees or try to do as much as we can before the snow. So again, that's, I don't know if it's something that...
Don't they require like no wind, no nothing?
Well, that's what he said. However, now he says that if the wind is there, but very minimum, but actually what it is now, I don't know if they wanna do a different stuff, but he said what to do, they put a paint on the stump. And he say it just requires for it to dry enough so the roots roll. So now he says if we have a little bit of breeze, it's okay, but I know last time there's absolutely no wind. So and he was actually supposed to get in touch with me this week, but I guess he'd been busy.
You guys are talking about treating stumps to kill elm or what?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. If you guys want, basically you can buy, even without a herbicide license, you can buy stump treatment from Winfield. But I have my license if you guys need me to...
So I thought this was, I'm sorry, I thought this was for the Chinese elms.
Chinese elms?
Yeah.
Are they big stuffs?
They vary in sizes, we got some that are probably about...
So usually what you guys do is you cut them and then drill them and then pour the, you know, you fill the holes. The only thing you cannot do is do it when it's raining, because it'll fill the holes and wash all that on the ground and kill everything else but...
Well, Mount Mary, I mean, it's sunny at nine o'clock and nine oh five, it's like a hurricane out there. You never know when you can do it or not. Any other questions?
I know you guys are busy, but when are you gonna stop mowing the alleys? Or the salad streets?
Yeah, then in back, yeah, hopefully.
So we do have a lot of stuff and I'm not trying to make excuses, but we have the 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 police department, the demolition that needs to get done. We have, there's a few other items, the well, the the west well, we need to do a valve in that. We did fix Cooper, right? Cooper booster is done now?
Yes and no. We 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 got one going pretty good, now we need to concentrate on the other one. And we have this stuff for it, we just need to make kind of...
So I'm wondering if we could maybe get Juan to do some of the alleys and some of the roadways in the mowing. Do you think that's... Driving the, do you know where?
No. You can't drive.
I think I'm doing more than a... Those roads are tough, aren't they?
I think what maybe we can do...
How long does it take to do an alley? Can we get Carl to whip it on in a couple of days?
Normally in a day, he can do like, like a good section of the town. And Carl is very good at it, I just hate to be putting Carl and stuff like that when he's doing other things that's...
Why is Carl always the only one doing it?
Well, he's the one that, in the beginning, that was trained, or not that you need to be trained, but he he's the one that's pretty careful with that. He he actually takes care of that more. You know, we have a buyer, I'm sure that he could handle that very well, or Vince, I believe Vince would do a good job on that. I'm actually thinking about putting Vince on that, you know, and...
So let's do that, let's do that, let's try to do that this week or next week? Let's put Vince on that and it's definitely done.
Yeah, because he he seems to be pretty good on things.
And instead of doing a whole section, what I would actually recommend, I don't know if it's just maybe something that you guys would agree with, is looking what alleys are like the worst, because I mean, some are like really, really bad and then some are like, I mean, they're bad, but they're, I mean...
It is my part, my half, don't you know?
It is yours?
My half, not the city, but I played, I played an individual for need that my yard...
A lot of times, wow, I'm sorry, I'm jumping, I'm thinking something else, but on the mowing, Carl last month, he did a lot of it up this way. He still hasn't been able to, been able to get to your spot. And then there's other things that come up, so it kinda puts us back again, you know? It's like next week, we we can... It's like next week, we, we tend to go to the west well, and, uh, 'cause we have slowed down quite a bit on the water. So that's, that's another project that I feel that's, uh, we need to address. However, I will get Vince, uh, I'll get called to educate him on that tractor, and I think Vince would do real good on that. Not to say that I wouldn't, or Daniel. Daniel's mostly the operator. He's the one that, that is real good with the backhoe. Uh, you know, and I, I, for some things that we've been doing, I'd rather have Daniel.
So now let's get, let's get Vince on the mower and let's, um, do some of the, the, the bad alleys, the main bad alleys.
We'll get it done.
I know, what were you talking about?
This is, um, this is a person that tells us, uh, they can.
As in, give us an example.
Well, I think, I think it was like, I think it was like, by Larry's House or like, you know, like...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I get what you're saying.
Larry's.
Like by Larry's.
That's one of the ones that he...
And I noticed if you guys did like the high school road going up, I noticed that was...
Yeah, he did all that. I almost, he almost got off to Ernie's pace. And, uh, I told him, of all paces, I wish you could've gotten a little extra, you know, but he said that, you know, anyways, we'll get him going on that.
So he has to walk that whole section before he can drive him through the rocks?
That's what we do. Uh, not like, see, Carl already knows alleys and the roads, so he knows where to stop, what to move and all that. Uh, you know, uh, in the past, what we used to do, if we had that old forty-five hundred tractor that I used to ride, and I used to put the blade down low enough to the ground that I would actually push all the blocks or debris off of the alleys, you know? But I mean, this one, you know, you, you have to get down and, and observe the area first. And that's something that, that Carl always did. He, he, he would walk each alley or whatever the shoulders, and he already knew what's, what's there, you know? And actually at the park, we have a pile of blocks that we have been picking up from the side of the roads for the alleys.
Last time you said that you were gonna be running supervisor with one, I'll fill them in. How is that working out?
It's, it's working out okay. However, with, everything's been going on with the major problems, we've kind of been working together on, on, on the major deals. Uh, but, uh, once we get caught up on that, then we still can do the, you know, like, like, for example, Vince can go and do the mowing, and whoever's on that list can do other things. So it's, I think it's something that, that will eventually work out.
Did you have Vince agree at this week or do you have like this week?
Off and on, off and on. We've, you know, I've had the guys do certain things, again, nothing major sewer issues or, like today, we had to do a, a gas main, work on a gas main.
So on that gas main, the three couldn't do that, and then two would be doing something else?
We, I had, I had, uh, I actually had three to do the sewer main, the gas main. And, uh, I had Vince, uh, recheck on meters, water meters for this one.
So it separated?
So it was kind of like separated, yeah.
Did you find that two inch PVC there?
Yes, they actually found it yesterday. However, they thought it was the, the two inch yellow steel. And then I, I explained to the guys this morning, I said, uh, "You may wanna check again because I know that they used to run a yellow PVC." So we dug it up and sure enough, or the guys dug it up and sure enough, it was, it was a yellow PVC.
It was on the west side?
And it was on the west side. Yeah, so, but they, they did the, the, uh, gas tap and all that, so. But we got those two out of our way so we can start doing other stuff this round.
And will you be finishing up tomorrow, or are you guys gonna separate?
Uh, I think we're pretty much, uh, I think I'm almost finished. Uh, and then we'll, we'll go back to our, you know, our deals. Yeah, so. It, it's gonna take time for us to get adjusted to that, that split thing, you know, and eventually we'll, we'll get it to where it'll work that way. So, and, and you know, just like between me and Carl, we're, we're working together to make it. So just be patient with us.
You guys been doing any labor or...
Pardon me?
You guys been doing any labor?
Actually, I took the blade out yesterday. I did, uh, Granquita Estates, uh, the last road, I think it's Ninth Street. Uh, that one, I mean, I have faders that are really bad. And that's another thing is that, uh, I'm hoping to do more or get one of us to do more. You know, and now with the weather changing, it's kind of hard, but...
Do we have, do we have like a, some small elevator gravel?
Well, we just have...
I've got a pretty handy model. This is kind of a thing more close to Dennis's place, if you've been over my house? It's right in the middle of the road. It's, it's just getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
We'll, we'll check it out.
Do you guys have some? You know, that'll, that'll back it up now, now it starts getting wet. I think the gravel would be better than just putting it in there.
Yeah.
If you have any.
Well, we have, we have the, the gravel that we have at the park. Uh, don't think, you know, with just regular gravel, just kind of...
When M, M P was here, I bought a load of ballast from him, but this, he was bouncing it.
Yeah.
Icebreaker, now you can see it.
You're the one that straightened out? Okay. You did a good job.
I put it where it was just most muddy for me, but now that hogs, the middle of the road there.
Okay. We'll get it on our list. Anything else? Richard, got any questions?
I know, only pretend to stop him. All right, uh, administration, Dennis?
Yeah, we did, uh, you know, we, a couple meetings ago, we talked about the road court or safety audit that we were gonna do with the state. And they suggested we go with, uh, the federal, the federal D O T. But it turns out that we don't qualify for that one because, uh, there's, hasn't been many accident reports on Broadway, which is kind of indicative of, uh, the administration, the police administrations, uh, policy of not doing reports and submitting it to the federal, uh, U C R, I believe it is. So they said, "Well, you don't have any accidents, so you don't qualify for the five million dollars of funding." Hundred percent covered, so. They kind of did this. Uh, we need, we need reports of accidents. And I spoke with, uh, Chief, and he says, "It's that, that whole past practice is over. We want to start reporting everything, even if it's redundant." The federal government's gonna find out everything. Because all the statistics that goes to the U C R, we get funding for. Not just in our police, but in public safety, so. That was a kind of a shame. Uh, we'll try again next year. And I, I've given, uh, Chief Reyes the specs of the statewide, uh, price agreement, and he'll be picturing options, and what did we decide on? That we're just gonna go with everything?
Yeah, just the basics, you know, things that we don't, you know, that take it off, is just keep it basic and...
Yeah, okay, and then I just have to submit that to USDA. They'll approve it, and then, uh, we can actually utilize a statewide price agreement. We don't have to get three quotes. We just get one, I bring it before council for approval. And, uh, they already have an agreement with the pyramid of the state of New Mexico, and it's a, it's a streamlined process. Tyler, uh, with the Tyler Technologies, uh, transition, we've done a pre and post meter reading files. I had to convert it into an Excel spreadsheet, and then I emailed it to them. And so now they're comparing the two before the meter reading and after the meter reading. And so they can, so the programs can see how, all the math behind it, and then they'll start programming all these types of things to make sure that jobs. Our P and Z is still working on the zoning ordinance revisions. Uh, they're adjusting a lot of the R V stuff that we were having issues with before in the past. Uh, and finally, Gloria earned a certificate for FY nineteen, a T R D, uh, security awareness training in nine twenty-five. This is one of those things where we just kind of dropped it on her, said, "Hey, you gotta take this training today." So she had to close up shop for, I think she did it in four hours. And so she jumped on it and she got one more certificate. And all of these abatements have been discussed tonight, except for the one, Highway sixty in Wilson. It wasn't an agenda item, but we discussed it. He's in commu- communications with them, and they want to donate it to the town. So if the town chooses, which will probably be on the next agenda, we'll, we'll ask you guys if you wanna accept the donation, because we'll most likely incur the cost of, um, the title transfers, which includes title insurance, title search, uh, perhaps some kind of, uh, any liens on the property. Or we may say, "You can't just donate it. You pay off all these, these obligations and then we'll accept them." So it'll be, so we'll begin a negotiation process through this. And, uh, D M B, they, they brought in fifteen thousand two hundred and seven approximately in gross revenues. Uh, of course, up, we only get twelve percent of that, over fifteen. And estimated, uh, driver's license and C D L's issued was fifty-four. Registrations is a hundred ninety-six, and estimated titles with registrations is fifty. Oh, uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, like yesterday, I just ordered those locks for that back door, so it'll be able to increase security significantly, ju- at least in the daytime hours. So people aren't just walking out. We were in, what, Friday or was it Monday?
Yeah, Friday. I was sitting there, um, talking to Phyllis. We actually were all in there. We were all, so... Before I knew it, there was this guy behind me, and he said, "Hey!" And I was like...
That happens all the time.
So it was like, yeah, it was kind of like shocking, 'cause he was behind the counter, right next to me, like he was just kind of like, you know? I didn't, it took him, but I... I didn't wind it up on accident, so... Well, it was the first time.
Uh, public input, so.
Let him go first.
You can carry him out. Am I, am I recognized?
You are.
I am. Does the council have a policy for, um, the way that citizens of the town contact individual members of the council to talk about issues? By email or by phone? Is there a reliable way that you approve that, that citizens can be certain of getting a response and a conversation? I say this because in the ten years probably that I've been attending this, these meetings, I've been, uh, refused contact by three different members of the council, past and present, by being told, "No, don't wanna talk to you." Or, "I'll talk to you later, but not now." Or repeated phone calls by me to an answering machine and never a response. And I, I say this because I, I recognize that you all have jobs, or some of you have jobs, you all have families, you got other things you wanna do. And your time is precious, but part of that time belongs to the people on this side of the council. Being a representative is a legal obligation. You all remember that last year, I had to come here and threaten a suit to get action on a matter that you ultimately, to your credit, recognized needed to be addressed, and you did address it. But I had, for years, been ignored in my attempts to talk to individual members of the council, and it might have speeded things up for good there. When you get elected to the council and you show up for your first meeting, sitting on that side of the desk, you might need some information, background, some history from people on this side of the council. So if you don't have a policy, would you make one?
Hey, yeah, we will look into making that. And, um, yeah, I mean, I don't know who you're referring to, but yes, we are...
But I'm referring as three, so that, you know...
As, as, uh, as legal, as, as the town council, we are supposed to respond.
Yes.
And you want me to respond to, to you, and, uh, if, if I am assuming that the council is aware of this, um, I don't know who or what, but, um, yes, we are, we our number, our email addresses, our, our addresses, and our phone numbers are public, correct?
I don't think so, uh...
When they call City Hall, say...
It's their discretion. Currently, it's their discretion, because it's their private access, so. What we could do perhaps is, uh, maybe, we could definitely make an email address, but that doesn't guarantee no response. Same with issuing phones. And it, it is, I think the main issue is, uh...